We will roll call. Harry, what's your...
Yeah?
If I do, that's coming. Administrative Business Services. Approval of bills payable?
Uh, there's actually nothing there, I'm sorry. That was just a carryover. It's kind of a header, so there's no bills payable, but it is...
Oh, I thought you were running the carry-cav. Should we...
Yeah, it is. Well, you're right, you're right. It is part A, so it would be part of a bills payable. I guess that would be the best way to say it. So Kerry is here to speak to the request. The request is for Power Gistics, which is a tower for classrooms that would store the devices. My assumption is the ones that are over here on the countertop would also keep them then charged, and without that, that's kind of probably where they're going to be stored, and kids are going to get it out of here and so forth. So Kerry, you want to give us a further explanation and just kind of walk us through?
Yep, sure. So, the devices were ordered in July to get ready for the school year, and they have to be prepped by the IT department and all of that stuff, and then we are waiting to figure out exactly what we're going to do. You'll see, are gonna, we're gonna go to the classrooms. We have three of the towers already in the fifth grade classrooms that we're looking at getting for here. But you'll see, in the classrooms and in here, we have power, not very many power outlets in classrooms, so it's very difficult to, you know, get power strips lined up or have devices in a secure place to charge, especially with some of our classrooms having some desktops and other things in there that they use with students. So, the, the power towers are so that there is one place for the devices to go. They're locking so that at nights, the teachers can lock their Chromebooks in there, so they're secure, and so that it only takes up one power source in the classrooms. So, that's kind of what...
You still have to plug them into the tower?
Yeah, so the tower has 12 shelves in it, so up to 12 devices. What we purchased is for 10, 10 devices in the classroom, so there's a couple of empty slots, but also if there's other, you know, device that a teacher already has or whatever, can fill those extra couple of slots in the classroom. So the cords kind of get strung through the shelf, and then it's an easy, kind of comes through the front or wherever the plug is on the Chromebook itself to get plugged in easily and just slid into a shelf in the classroom.
Do we have a tower in the building, did you say?
Yes.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Should we go for a walk?
Yeah, if you guys want to come for a walk.
If anybody needs to use the elevator, you can do that. It's actually upstairs, and we can meet ya up there.
It isn't on. It wasn't on when I dumped it. I think most of it is on this time.
I'm sure you're just in a position...
Yeah.
You'll be able to find it. We look for a motion one way or the other. That cost was over $90, $92, $28.
This one is more of a want than a need, do you agree?
Well, I don't, I would, you know, Kerry's here to speak to it, but I would consider it more toward the need than a want, in that you have to charge them, and there's not enough outlets in each room to charge them. Or you'd have multiple power strips out, which I don't think that would pass a safety inspection if you put a outlet strip onto an outlet strip, because that's the only way we'd be able to charge them. And currently, they're not secure, so they're not locked up, and kids here are everywhere inside and outside of classrooms and buildings and libraries, and we have no way to secure them. So, I would classify this as more of a need than a want.
This one, uh, this has been in your budget, so this is over and above what you have budgeted for?
This is in Kerry's budget.
Kerry's budget?
Yes. Kerry put this budget request forward to Brad. Brad gave approval when we designed the preliminary budget, so the dollars are in the preliminary budget right now, and part of that expenditure's already been made with the Chromebooks, and this is the second part of that expenditure.
And if this was before, oh, Policy 672 would've got by, and then we would've approved it or would've came in front of us basically after the fact.
Correct. Yeah.
Even as it was a month ago.
Well, my concern is it wasn't included in with the other. Maybe they wouldn't have been voted for if, you know, there was another $9,000 tagged on to the price of them at that time would've made that a little different equation, too.
I feel like, didn't you, was, sorry, didn't...
What?
Was there a, wasn't there, when we talked about Chromebooks, like, sort of a second line item that talked about...
There was.
Software, other things that we would need for them? It wasn't just the initial purchase of software, would never be other, other things with it?
The, so there's two different things, I think, that might be confusing for us. There's a district technology plan that I put forward that the board approved, and that had Chromebooks that went down through seventh grade for a one-to-one initiative. These are Chromebooks that were being purchased at the building level, that's not part of the one-to-one initiative. So it's really building-wise, it'd be like a one-to-four or one-to-five ratio. That'd be more like a one-to-two ratio in the classrooms, you know, fourth and fifth, so that we've got a set of 10 for roughly 20, 25 kids in the classroom. It's the building's way of trying to embrace technology, which is part of our strategic plan, and that was more of a, so separate from any of those discussions that we had, it was just something that was outside of the district-wide technology that we budgeted for, that was a building-specific need.
What have we done with the high school? Is that where the carts took care of it?
Correct. Yeah.
But the kids take home the Chromebooks at the high school, so they charge them at night at home.
Well, we got carts at the, because the board didn't want the kids to take the Chromebooks home, and we also agree with that. We didn't believe they needed to be taken home at seventh and eighth grade, so we needed to purchase carts to charge them during the day, or at nights when they're not using them during the day. But the kids would be responsible for charging their nine through 12, and we charge them with our carts that we purchased in seven and eight. And now, we really, a cart doesn't work so well here, because, like you were saying, one teacher would have a cart in the classroom of 30, she or he would be responsible for charging all 30, and then they would roll them around and divide them up, and then at the end of the night, consolidate all three classrooms back into one cart, roll it into the room, charge it up. Where here, if each one has their own tower in their own room, they can just keep track of their 10. We can always add another 10 tower down the road if we wanted to, to make it a classroom instead of 20, but actually be 24, because it can hold 12, which is, on average, our class sizes. But this was the solution that Brad piloted last year in fifth grade, like you saw, and they really felt like that was a good workable solution for the grade levels, and that's why we're expanding that to, to more classrooms in fifth grade as well as fourth grade.
What's a Chromebook? Three, three fifty?
Roughly, Chromebook case and warranty.
Doesn't anybody want to get their name on a paper this week, or...
No.
Well, as far as making a motion?
Making a motion, yeah.
I'll make a motion to pass it. Go, please.
You have a second?
One second.
Any other discussion? All right, uh, we will have a roll call.
Dolphin?
Upstand.
Yes.
Hay?
Yes.
Kinch?
No.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Stefis?
Yes.
That passes 411.
A little more technology.
The second item is brought forward to you again as part of Policy 672, or 472, that would state that if we're going to go out for a purchase over $5,000, board needs to pre-approve. This is a recommendation that I'm bringing forward to the board, and it was somewhat timely in that we were already meaning to approve this, so I added it to it. It is a second phase of the project to continue to expand our fiber, and therefore remove our dependency on Charter or Frontier or another carrier that brings fiber from one location to the other. So to back up, you have in front of you in your packet the RFP that was created by Frank Livermore, and he writes those RFPs pretty tight so that vendors know exactly what they're bidding on when they bid a project. And in fact, that RFP actually became the contract, so when, when we went out to solicit bids, people knew exactly what the scope of the project was, exactly where their responsibility started and stopped. E-Rate has used this contract and this RFP for many, multiple questions and clarifications in order to receive funding. Basically, on our last project, it was an $85,000 project, we received reimbursement of 60% of that by E-Rate. And part of it was our ability to be able to answer some of the technical questions, right down to maps and drawings of where the fiber was going from point to point. So that project is coming to completion. The next phase, then, would be to look at pulling fiber from the high school to the elementary school, and that would then no longer require us to have Charter or Frontier be that carrier, that transport for us, so therefore we would have a cost savings by removing that, as we would own the fiber between the two points. This one's a little bit more technical, if you would. From the highway up to the building was just burying it, entrenching it, bringing it up. The route between the high school and the elementary could be above ground, it could be below ground, it could be a combination of, and there's a lot of technical aspects that go along with that to find the best route, the most optimal solution for pulling our own fiber from point to point. So that requires a lot of the work that is here in front of you, that talks about the statement of the work that would be conducted by Frank. That would then propel forward into a request for proposal. That request for proposal then would solicit bids, and that would work in tandem with the E-Rate funding time windows that would allow us to then get reimbursement for this project, again, at about 60%. Our current monthly bill to transfer from Charter, from the high school to the elementary is $1,470 per month. That times 12 months would be $17,640 a year to get internet connection and network capability from the high school to the elementary. So the question was asked, well, is there a payback to this project? Really can't answer that at this point, because there isn't a known project amount. Do we know how much it would cost to write the request for a proposal that vendors would bid on, but we don't know how much the actual project would be? Once we have that work done, and vendors have given their price, and three or four vendors would say we could do it for this amount, or this amount, or this amount, then we can start to look at, well, would that payback be over 10 years? If you take the $17,640 and just multiply that out 10 years without inflationary increases, that's $176,400. So if you're looking at a 10-year payback, the question is, do you think a project might come in at under $176,000? I don't know. And with inflationary costs, would probably be more than that over the next decade to pull that internet from building to building. So I would recommend doing the study. The information will carry us for a long time. We don't necessarily have to go out for a bid right away, but it would allow us to have the information we could go into bid at any given time. So that would be my recommendation, is to go forward with the planning and the RFP writing. If that dollar amount is too much, we can go forward with the planning and not write the RFP, but we'll be up against some E-Rate timetables that if we don't have the RFP out in a certain amount of time, and it has to have an opportunity to be reviewed for 30 days, we would miss the E-Rate window and have to just push the project out an additional year, so. Any questions I can help clarify? I hope we gave enough context for the request, and...
What was the amount to run it from the highway to the high school?
Roughly about $85,000, of which we paid 39.
Now, what is this money that we're getting? Where does that come from?
Federal government. E-Rate is a program that subsidizes schools for, and libraries for broadband connections and connectivity.
Between, between schools, probably?
This one would be between the high school and the elementary, yes.
And they would subsidize it?
They would subsidize it. It's based on your free and reduced population, so we have been receiving a 60% reimbursement. Some that are very high-power districts receive 100% reimbursement. Those that are very low might only receive a 10 or 20% reimbursement.
I mean, looking at the consulting fee here, I think his consulting fee was about $5,500 on the last one, if I remember.
Yep.
Well, it's times two, so I wonder, thank, that the price is going to be times two to get it down here also. With wireless capability, since we have it at the high school, is there a way we can get it down here without cable?
Uh, we didn't, no, you would need a wireless tower. Bug Tussle made a proposal as a vendor to the city to put a wireless tower that would allow Wi-Fi throughout the city, and you would still pay a fee to access their Wi-Fi off of a tower. We have Wi-Fi or wireless connectivity in this building right now, so I'm connecting here without any cords, but that is then connected back to the high school in our main network, so we're all together as one entity, if you would.
You can get to our main network now with...
I can. I'm on our main network, because we have Charter connecting us from the high school to the elementary.
Without Charter?
Without Charter, we would be a standalone, independent entity that would be on its own network. We wouldn't be able to pull up an email of another faculty member in another building, because it would be not part of our network. We wouldn't be able to dial an extension to the high school. My extension's 810. You would, you'd have to make an external call out and then receive an external call in, in order to have that connected.
What was this wireless tower that the city was talking about? It would be possible we could go wireless then?
It would be, but the city rejected that proposal, so that is not going forward. That project is now dead on arrival, and the other piece to it is, we still wouldn't have any self-sufficiency. We would be paying Bug Tussle or other vendor to access their wireless capacities through their tower, instead of owning the fiber between the two points and not paying anybody any fees.
You said that libraries can also benefit from this financing?
Yes.
Is there a chance, or is it something we should explore, is having the library perhaps share this cost? Because if it goes up, like, to, you know, Iowa, down to Iowa...
Yep. We did investigate that, met with both the city, because that's, the municipality would have an interest in possibly doing this project, as well as the, the library, and both of those declined to get involved with what's called a CAN, or a Community Area Network. It basically shares the fiber that you're bringing in, because they have so few computers, the library runs maybe a dozen or two, and the city runs two in their office, and they really don't have any need for the capacity. When we talked about the cost of the project and their payback, it just didn't seem feasible for them to get involved in any of that.
They run, once our project's done, will they run one gig down here, because they're connected up there, or will they have 100 meg server down here?
No, we would have, basically, we would have capacity up to 10 gig right into this building, and so right now, we have capacity up to 10 gig at the high school. We're only going to pull 2 gig in, because we don't need to pay for 8 gig when we're not even using 1 gig right now, so we'll have more than enough capacity up there. Then we're limited down here to 100 meg, is there a pipeline that we're paying for? Obviously, we could get more through Charter, but we would pay more than the number we're already paying, which is, I think, $16,000. So we would have up to 2 to 10 gig instantly available to us at any time, at no extra cost, other than a one-time fee to open up the bandwidth to expand for additional gigs.
The, the fee to Charter, is that based on the amount of use, or that's just a flat fee?
That is a flat fee. Yeah, that's a flat monthly fee. And that was put out to bid. We also get a reimbursement from E-Rate for internet connectivity through Charter, and so therefore, we're required to bid that out. We looked at multiple vendors. Charter was the carrier that currently has the contract. So, you know, the question I would pose is, the internet is certainly not going away, and our capacity is only going to increase, and so there will be a payback on this, this project at some point, where we, and I don't know the number, like you said, it's safe to assume it might be the same or double, but at some point, it will pay for itself, because I don't believe the internet or the need for additional capacity is going away. As we get more and more video and streaming and so forth, it's only going to have more demand, and so I would, again, recommend going forward.
So that Charter fee, that, you know, we were, we were paying twice that much with high school?
Mm-hmm.
Were you?
Yeah.
So how much is the E-deal paying on Charter?
How much is the...
Reimbursement?
Ah, again, that's 60%.
60%?
Yeah.
So, it's only costing us 60% of that fee?
There's 60% E-Rate reimbursement on all internet connectivity, and if, yeah, so this, I just looked at the contract for this coming year. My, the piece I'm not, the reason I'm stumbling is I wasn't sure if that was pre or post-E-Rate eligible dollars, so I have to look at that.
Yeah, about $7,000 would be the net, if that's, if that's total rate.
What are costs of that now with the fiber into the high school per month?
Zero.
Zero?
Yeah.
Connected, don't touch anything?
Uh, we have a WISNet internet service provider is our, is the person that provides the internet. That is always going to be there, because somebody needs to provide the, the service. But we no longer have to pay for somebody to get it from WISNet to the high school. That is costing us nothing. And then likewise, if we took this next step in the project, whether we implement it next year or five years down the road, we still would need to do this study. I don't personally have the expertise to write this kind of a proposal as tight as it needs to be written for purposes of E-Rate reimbursement and/or just the technical aspect that a vendor would actually bid on a project of this magnitude. So you're going to need to pull this information at some point, if you ever were going to take that next step. So one of the questions to the board is, do you ever see us taking this step? Yes or no? And the answer is yes. It would only cost more as we delay the, the study. Certainly, things could change. There could be, you know, major infrastructure redo in the city where they put a lot of lines underneath, or I don't see a lot of that happening in the city, so I don't think this proposal would change significantly, unless they were to start doing major street repair and we could bury conduit at that time and maybe save on the project down the road. But as we've looked at the streets that they do have in the queue, there's nothing really that's helping us to get from here to the elementary as part of their next phases of street projects.
Did you budget for this?
I budgeted for the study, and then the E-Rate, if approved, we would know the project total and cost, and that would be something that the boards would look at as a part of a budget for following year.
So the, the item that you're asking us to approve, the study, you did budget for?
Yes, yeah. I have a preliminary budget for what I would call contracted services. We're contracting with a company for this service. That is part of the district's budget for efforts and initiatives like this.
Does that come under capital expense, then?
No, it would come under the district's overall operating budget. Not specific to a building, because it's between the high school and the, and the elementary.
Have we kind of faltered, this isn't for this meeting, but have we faltered on doing anything safety for the doors here in the school?
Uh, there is a proposal to me at the September 11th board meeting that would address that, yeah, so the board can say yes or no to a project on that school.
Kerry, what would be the max number of machines operating one time with these 90 in place, plus the ones that are in place, plus various PCs?
Probably...
I'm going to say that roughly.
150?
Yeah.
Would be the max, I mean...
100 meg?
Yeah. And you've got roughly five in each classroom, and you have roughly 18 classrooms. Cloud 20 is like 100, maybe, machines, but each teacher has a machine, so you have 35 there.
30 staff, I think, so...
30 staff members, plus there's probably 20 in this building or this library.
Yeah.
So you're, you're pushing 150 to 200 devices, probably at the elementary, between teachers, staff, and...
And your projects entail a lot of online...
More so and more so, you're seeing more video production and media that is, that's really where your bandwidth is, is coming from, is video streaming and/or creation of content.
But being using, like, the cloud to work on documents and all that stuff is, requires connectivity for the most part.
Right, right.
So I mean, every, whether they're doing high-tech, you know, all of it requires some sort of, yeah.
Correct. We are totally in the cloud, in the Google cloud, if you would, so we have, you know, we don't have massive storage servers in the back that are running and caching this data, but we do need to connect to the internet to constantly be refreshing that data, so that when we retrieve it, it's, it's the most current version.
And I know, we're going to have, I believe, two or three grade levels piloting digital portfolios this year, too, which would require a lot of posting and doing things online with that.
I excel accelerated reader. All of these things are using content in the classroom in small group settings constantly throughout the day.
Do you study in groups all the time?
Uh, no, there is whole group, full class instruction, and then there's also small group studies and, and/or rotations that would happen. So some kids might be reading while some kids are working on the computer, while some kids are getting one-on-one conferences and feedback. And then they would come together as a whole group and have a large group study and/or unit, and then I would break out maybe after that again. So it's, it's a combination of...
Uh, will we go ahead with the RFP?
Second.
Do you have a motion, a second? Any other discussion?
Well, we just got done with the high school. I'd like to have a little time to find out a little more information and digest it myself. It's going to be a net of $7,000 a year, it's going to cost us for the charter. And what was the, what was the cost for the total cost of the project up there after the reimbursement?
Uh, $39,000, that's, yeah. That was in, that's already been budgeted for in this year's budget?
Yeah, I understand. I would just, I'm looking at twice the distance and twice the adversity, at least, so you're probably looking at, well, I guess, probably four times as much to do this.
That's the part that Frank could maybe speak to better, but we would be using existing poles and existing conduit, and so, I mean, there could be potentially trenching, literally burying cable along some sets of streets, but we'd also be using the existing infrastructure that's there. So the, the difference being that coming up the hill was obviously a trench from Highway 151 up to the high school, lots of rock there, so they had to put in a pretty big rock contingency, and they had to bore through and drill through, and they didn't have to blast this time, but they ended up bringing in bigger equipment to get through the rock. That would be a different scenario, and not to say you're not going to encounter rock from the high school to the elementary, but they'll be using a lot of the existing conduits and infrastructures that may...
And Charter and whoever else are going to let you run their, this wire in their tube?
We would actually, that's, yeah, because I don't think they own the tube, they own the wire, but I don't know if they own the conduit. I think the city would probably own that.
Who owns it?
I would guess the city owns the conduit, but I don't think they own...
You don't doubt it.
I'll take the city one, but who's going to maintain this, then?
When you say maintain the...
The fiber, if something happens to it.
Um, that's a great question. I don't know the answer to.
Do we get E-Rate funding on this proposal?
We would.
After the...
No, I'm sorry, not on the proposal itself. It would be after, the actual project would be...
It would be, this would be rolling the entire project.
Yeah.
Well, one thing about your E-Rate funding, many years ago, it took $3 of tax money to return $1 to the municipality that it came from, federal taxes. Probably much higher than that now. I know this doesn't mean anything to anybody in the lower 47%, but it, it's pretty easy to think that this is free money, which it is not. It's just taking it out of a different pocket.
You, you were saying this is time-sensitive. Is there not E-Rate money for this fiscal year?
There is, yeah. And, and for Frank, he would prefer to get out here in the fall and start doing some of the, the studies. He's literally going to walk the, the route from here to there, marking each telephone pole, which is kind of stated in the proposal, that each one has some kind of a cue or number, UPCO, that says this is that pole, literally making that route from point A to point B, and finding the best route, and it's a lot easier to do before the snow flies, and also that coincides with then getting the proposal up and posted for 30 days, so vendors can respond to it. And then E-Rate continues to ask multiple questions for clarity purposes before they fund a significant project like this. So there's a lot of back-and-forth information that I'm working with Holter, which is our company that pulled the fiber, Frank Livermore, who wrote the RFP, and the district, and what we know. The three of us are always triangulating with a gentleman named Michael Sirodi from E-Rate with multiple questions that are very technical, and so you, you don't want to skip on this type of work, because it will create a lot of potentially risk for not being funded down the road if this isn't a real tight document.
The maintenance question seems like an important one to know the answer to, and I don't know why, this couldn't wait till our September meeting to maybe get that the answer?
I agree with that. If, uh, as you, it used to be, if they attach a power light pole, you're going to pay a monthly fee, but your hand fee, any pole you attach, you will pay a fee to be on, and if that goes down, you're going to pay price to put it back up, too, if you have fiber loss. So, and fiber's not easy to repair.
Mm-hmm.
Other things are, but fiber's pretty tough.
So I'll withdraw my second event motion.
We don't want another second? That means you got it, yeah. Is Nexus coming, uh, September?
Mm-hmm.
If they have any reason to explain this to us or make this part of... Because we wouldn't want them to handle it, and we must be paying another fee to them, I guess, but...
Yeah, they could certainly incorporate it into the project, but it's not part of their scope.
We no longer have a second? You wanna keep your motion on the table, Andy?
I'll draw it.
Okay. Any other information? What it wants for the first September meeting on this project? Certainly, he could give us all part of a figure on the overall project cost. He knows the distance between here and...
Get a question I can ask?
There you go.
Well, I assume what Larry said, that you're gonna... Nobody's gonna let you use their conduit or their pole or whatever for free. You know, if you own it, you fix it.
Be more expensive. It'd be nice to go all the way on the ground. They have a lot less maintenance.
Would you like Frank to join us for the board meeting?
Anybody? Sure?
No reason not to.
You wanna be on the agenda? Eat local, local side? I follow that area.
Maybe a long ways.
Alcana?
Three hours, I think.
I see he doesn't have any... He doesn't charge for mileage in this proposal.
I see on the... I know supposedly does. I've been pointing out...
Oh, he does.
They'd be remote.
I was looking at it.
He only charges one way, but it's three hundred dollars one way.
Probably telepresence and then...
Yeah.
There you go. Verified pre-post E-rate on the charter, server in the bag.
Well, if we get a fairly decent estimate on how many feet it would have to be, but then you're going to have to go blocks and not be able to go on a straight line or whatever. We could ask some of these contractors that do that sort of work around here. They'd have an idea what...
See the anticipated timeline on page nine. He's got the project with the potential start date in September, so I don't think that... You know, the eleventh. He wanted to start on the sixth, and that would be his timeline to make sure we got to the contract award date in time for E-rate documentation and so forth. But then we've got a little bit of wiggle room there, so I don't see that as problematic. And I'll bring back answers to your questions. And let's see if Frank's available to join us, either remotely or in person, if it works for his calendar and schedule, and answer your questions directly if he's available.
After somebody did it, then he gets a hundred dollars an hour for consulting him?
Correct. Yeah, he would then be a consultant if there's needs... His consulting is actually then helping you... There's a rubric that he puts together. I do have and shared with the board in the email that I sent earlier today, his request for proposal that was for the high school project. In the back of that, there's actually a rubric that he actually scores. And he's got a lot of the technical knowledge and expertise to help steer the district toward a vendor that he believes is... Because they're going to come with different ways of approaching this project. And his experience working with schools across the state allows him the understanding of which proposals might actually be dangerous for the district, even though they might be less money, there's more risk. So, he's been very influential in helping us make the right choice for the project that is best for our district. That would be where the consulting piece comes in, is helping us select a vendor. Once we've selected a vendor, we work and contract directly with the vendor. In this case, it's Holter. And that is a company that we're connected with. But there has been just times to... Even today, I was on the phone with Frank to make sure that the project's scope was exactly as we stated it and thought it was. Roger and I had a question as the vendor was thinking they were only gonna go so far on the project, and we corrected that and made sure that the full project was getting done just as it was proposed.
Something like that, then he charges us for it?
I don't think he would charge us for a quick phone call, probably less than five minutes. But if it took some technical expertise, then maybe. But once the proposal's written and contract signed, the vendor has a very clear understanding of what's expected to make the project happen.
And last item is the music teacher?
Yes, the board in the agenda had a item that was going to ask for consideration of FTE with regards to music. Later today, I learned from staff member Kevin Cooley that he is resigning from his position as middle school band and middle school high school choir. And therefore, we have a vacancy. So, instead of moving toward a conversation around how we would mitigate if he stayed, I would look for a recommendation to approve his resignation. That way, we can move forward with the posting. My recommendation would be moving toward a posting of six twelve choir and general music as the licensure certifications that we'd be looking for. And then we would work with Mr. Nevers. We'd have to relook at his schedule. Most likely, a five twelve band would be the schedule that would result. And, you know, we were reacting to this as of noon today, so we may have other alternates or options based on the certifications of the applicants that we could consider. But that would be our first attempt to try to fill this position in a really short order.
Why is it that the contract is only binding to the school district?
There is a binding contract also to the employee, and it does have a severance clause in it that does kick in and states that they have to pay a fee to the district for separation after July one.
I think in the future, I'd change that. It's a contract for us, should be contract for them. If you signed it, you were willing to perform those duties for one year, you should have to perform them, of course. And I suppose they could do a sloppy job, but...
State statute really doesn't give the district a lot of strength in this area. If an employee decides to resign and there's a monetary consequence for that, there's nothing that we can do to actually hold the employee in the district. And that has been litigated and failed on a number of occasions where they said, "We're not going to release you from the contract." And I'm not aware of a case where the district's actually won that.
I hope that you'd want to force a teacher to stay in a district where they don't want to be.
Want to go to... Is Mr. Nevers full-time now?
He is full-time.
Unfortunately, we have to honor it. And if you wanna get rid of him, look what kind of a deal it is to hire somebody. That's the part that kind of irritates me, but...
Are we sure we can cover that tonight, though?
It is related to the request for additional FTE. And I think it's because of the delayed addition of the information that was provided, instead of adding FTE, you're actually going to approve a resignation. So, you know, I think it's all under that general heading of music staffing. And I think it is permissible to go ahead and take action on that tonight.
What is the forfeiture?
I will look at the exact contract. It changes after July one and then changes again after August one and then after again on September one. So, I can look that up while we're talking. We don't get this often, so...
My Lisa said there's no reason not to approve the resignation, I don't think. Because I'm with you, I don't think they should be able to do it like that, but they do do it.
It's just a formality. I mean, so I don't know if they would approve the documentation. Sounds like...
So, you have a motion and a second? The music programs in Mineral Point have been sputtering for the last, what do you say, two, three years? And we need to fix that.
Yeah, we're certainly monitoring it. I think we've made some fantastic hires. I think we've done some things to move the program in the right direction. I do think there's some opportunities for us to continue to correct some areas and make it a stronger program. Kevin, as we have talked in the past, was going to make a shift into the marching band. That was his area of expertise. And admittedly, Matt is more of a concert choir band director, and that's not his strength. So, there is an opportunity to professionally develop Matt around the marching band to grow that program.
Well, if you look at the high school band numbers, is that the entire number of students is what? Coming out of middle school? I don't know what middle school is coming out of the elementary school. It starts early in the education process of these kids.
It does. And, you know, I think arguably, one of the pieces to that is the lack of stability in staffing over the time. And I think we could all point to that. Is one particular piece to this puzzle that has made the retention of students in band challenging, but I don't think that's the only reason. I think there's some other things that can be looked at as a contributing factor as to why the band hasn't continued to grow with its numbers. And I don't think that's all just on staffing. I think there's other pieces to this that need to be considered as well.
Outside of the school, you mean?
Outside of the school, yes. You know, and we're trying to make... I mean, there's not administrative ability that doesn't want a vibrant music program, choir and band. We've been trying to hire the very best candidates on a limited budget. We don't have a lot of extra dollars in staffing. We have a lot of new accountability managers and standards that have forced us to make some tough decisions. And, you know, with that, we still wanna have it balanced and a strong co-curricular program, so...
I think we lost a very good teacher, Mr. Cooley. Disappoints me.
We're disappointed as well. We always wish somebody personally, for him and his family, the very best. But I agree that we would've wanted to retain him if it was at all possible.
Did he indicate any reasons?
I do have his letter of resignation here I can share with the board. And it basically states that he has an offer at another school as a band director, and after careful consideration, he decided that he can't pass up this chance to pursue his opportunity. It goes on to state that he's enjoyed his time at Mineral Point and particularly enjoyed rebuilding the band program over the past few years. It's been very satisfying to watch students grow and musicians and students in the band program expand. And he hopes that Mineral Point can find the right balance to encourage further growth in the band department as well as the music department as a whole. He is currently on a summer school assignment. He has stated that he's going to finish that assignment up through tomorrow, which is his fifteenth and final day. And he's available to answer questions. He will lend copies of materials to the next teacher to help them in their transition of things that he was planning to do. So, again, he thanks us, and he wants to stay in touch with the teachers and staff here through his professional years. He's leaving under what I would consider an amicable situation. He's been very forthright and honest with us about his intentions and his willingness to try to help us in our transition. It should be noted that he and his wife are Mount Orville, and the commute to Madison, I think, is something if they're both going in the same direction, was appealing to him. So, we certainly wish Kevin the best, and we will do the very best we can to find a replacement and continue to grow the program to the very best of our ability.
The thing about the band is lack of uniforms. You know, I remember years back, and you went to Dairy Days at Platteville. I don't have a mouse. I haven't been there for years at Mouse or anything, or the fair at Valmont or whatever. There would be nine or ten bands there with very attractive uniforms on and marching. And we're always waiting for the Cuba City Band because they did more things, and they always had the sharpest-looking band there. But, you know, when you go down, and this one's got a pair of cut-off jeans and this one's got something else, it really doesn't incite a whole lot of fervor in a person, I guess, when you're watching it, so...
The bands do wear uniforms. I mean, for the concerts, they wear... They get dressed up in the uniform.
I'm not talking about the concerts. I'm talking about when they're marching.
Yeah, but they have band shirts, and then they wear jackets.
We actually...
Well, it's not much of a uniform to what it used to be. Plus, they used to have a straight line, and they were marching in step, where now they look like somebody just dropped a shell in there someplace, and they're scattering.
We purchased new band uniforms last year for this upcoming fall season, so you will see a brand-new look in uniform?
Well, I know they're highly expensive, and I know that they used to have fundraisers back when I was younger to pay for them, because I don't know what they cost then, but it was...
They're very expensive.
Yeah, probably more than a football, you know?
And we've already made that purchase, already being processed. The order is en route, and we hope to have them for the fall if they're not already on site. I don't know if you can speak to that. I know some of our boosters are here and others, but...
I believe they won't be here for the first game, right?
It's an extremely sharp uniform. And to your point, Glenn, we want the band program and our choir program to take a lot of pride in their program. We've done a lot to try to invest around the uniforms and/or chairs in the band room, the music stands, the band room, the shelves that go behind the musicians as they perform. The band boosters continues to be a vibrant group that partners with us on a lot of things and continues to help us with uniforms and choir robes and so forth. So, we are doing everything we can to continue to invest in the program while trying to maintain the needs across the district and instructional, core instruction that has some high accountability to it right now. So, it's a really tough balance to be able to do both. But I think we've done our due diligence to continue to invest in the program, but we need to continue to develop our staff to be the best they can be so that our kids...
Well, music is something you can do forever. My uncle played in the city band at Rockford till he was seventy-some years old. You know, it's not like playing football. You're not gonna do that for the rest of your life or whatever.
The band program is no different than the aid program. It starts with the instructor. If you got a vibrant instructor, an instructor that attracts kids, you will grow that program. You've gotta start with the instructor.
Well, the only problem is that not all instructors have legal capabilities.
I don't think many schools march anywhere anymore, do they?
I don't think so. I know it used to be. It was something, you know...
High schools...
That was a high point of the parade, too.
We can do it somewhere to go.
So, Platteville Journal did a big article two years ago where they interviewed every school district in their coverage area about this issue, about the decline of the marching band. I think that was the exact title of the story. And it was pretty interesting because every school seems to be facing kind of the same thing in their area, and there are a lot of competing interests and things like that. But it was interesting to hear from the band directors themselves about the decline of the marching band, so...
And as a perspective, I'm originally from Petosse. Petosse dropped their marching band program while I was in high school. And speaking to one of the issues that Kevin was pushing for for this next school year was he was trying to create a regional marching band competition clinic piece to kind of, again, try to put Mineral Points as a focus for the students here, and also because he saw kind of a lack of bad motivation for students as a competition or as a clinic. And he got very little, if any, interest from teachers in the area as far as having band teachers who want to have their high school bands judged. So, this is kind of what we're seeing across the board.
Well, the people aren't, you know, willing to support it or don't care that much about it. Not much you can do, I guess. I had a nephew go after the Rose Bowl because he's in UW marching band.
Get a ring too? Get a ring too?
Do you get a ring too? I didn't know about that part.
So, you have a motion and a second? Any other discussion?
I may want to ask if Ruth wanted to speak to it. I don't know if we can have a follow-up.
Not to the motion.
Okay. Okay. Do you want to say anything at all, Ruth?
I would agree that I'm very sad that Mr. Cooley is leaving, which is related to a motion.
Okay, thank you. All in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carried in the end. Add it there, Andrew.
That is the like in the agenda.
Motion to adjourn. Melissa. Stephen Larry. Did we have somebody else raise their hand?
We're just curious, I guess...
My question is, do you need a motion to fill the position, or does that just come with a resignation?
It was my understanding it was coming with resignation. That's what Luke said.
Okay.
That's why I'm... We brought up two things.
If we wanna make sure Luke doesn't get any flack, we can make a motion that we post the position.
Post and hire.
I don't know what you want. You want to post the position for it?
Kevin's position.
For it is. That gonna cover it, or are you gonna do something different?
I think, you know, it's a semantic thing. And I think when there's a resignation, the automatic fallback position would be that we're gonna post it to refill it unless the board takes specific action not to refill. So, I'm gonna work on the premise that we will refill the position unless the board takes specific action. Otherwise, if we were to, in any meeting, forget to act on refilling the position, it just seems like a unnecessary goal.
I think it's not a bad idea to go ahead and...
Well, then, the public knows you're doing something. Otherwise, they'll be asking us, "What are you doing about the band?" I'll make a motion with you, post the position for the band to replace Kevin Gooey. Not necessarily for the same arrangement as he had, but to fill the needs of the school. That ambiguous enough?
Yep.
I think it should be choir and music, as Luke had stated it.
Should it be post and hire a person? I think we had this mentality last time.
Hire the person after you posted to see what you have.
So, we have a motion, uh, on the floor to post and hire a position to fill the needs of the school. Music position, I guess. Second?
Second, yeah.
Second, Larry. Okay, any other discussion on that?
I just said post it. I didn't say hire.
Doesn't want hire in there. Do you have a, I mean, you're good with it saying hire, though, aren't you?
No, that's not what I said.
Just post the position. Bring it back anyhow for the board.
Yeah, we'll just vote on it when you get the candidates.
So, if we...
We do anyway, though.
Starts September first.
If we do, uh, yeah, if we do get a candidate before school starts, and anybody watching this meeting is not going to hire or, or apply for a position that's just being posted, but no authorization to actually hire.
Well, anybody that does get hired does it. I mean, they post, there might be five or six of them, but not normally going to get hired.
But they're applying with the idea that there's actually a job.
Right.
What we were saying as a board is we're, we're hiring, but we're not saying there's a job.
We're posting a position, but we're not saying there's a job there.
I don't know how you interpret it, but when you post a job that you're hiring somebody that, uh, doesn't necess... Isn't that to go and hire someone?
That's what I thought.
I, um...
I was trying to say, okay, what if you get five applicants and none of them qualify? You're just going to hire one of them?
No, Luke has the discretion to hire a good candidate. I mean, we're not, you're not going to hire...
This is a place where board policy might assist the board in that when there's a resignation or a severance from employment, the superintendent, the district administrator will review that situation and recommend to the board whether that needs to be rehired or not. And I'm saying that it does. So, if you accept that resignation, then I'm going forward. Uh, otherwise, I would have told you that, "And we're not going to refill that position," and you would have approved it as such. But, um, your, your accepting of the resignation is enough for me to go forward and post and hire this position. I'll bring a candidate back at a salary level that you will approve or not approve, and that's at what point you'll say, "We hire or don't hire." Which you've always had that full autonomy to do. So, you'll get that day in the sun regardless, uh, as a board because you have that final approval, but, you know, we're moving forward, at least the way I would perceive it, is to move forward with a post with intent to hire, and the board would have the final authority to say yes or no.
In your, uh, your, you think you'll be a lot of people good in this?
No.
Pretty late.
Yep.
The word we stand on Glenn's motion is something that we want to get about.
Well, the reason I mentioned that I didn't say hire, I don't want to change because somebody makes a motion someday, and you can change it afterwards. I don't like the premise.
I'd recommend a strike, and then when I bring a candidate, you can, you can vote to hire or not hire.
I'm not saying not to hire anybody, but I, what I said, if you change that, I don't like the premise because somebody might make a motion another time, and I get altered afterwards.
But you can make the decision to alter your own motion.
I'll just withdraw, and then you can make whatever you want. How's that?
That sounds okay.
So, Glenn's motion has been withdrawn.
I'll, uh, second on it.
Put your, a second. Any other motions on the posting and hiring? Or should we just follow board policy and let you do what he has done in the past?
I, I move that we post it and hire a qualified candidate if, if Luke is able to find one.
Motion by Lisa to post and hire qualified candidate. Do we have a second on that motion?
Well, it still comes to the board.
Uh, yes, they'll have to vote on it, yeah.
Right.
Before, before he hires.
Same either way.
Only one of us are thinking that we don't need this position.
Right.
No, I just, that's the way I stated it, so I, you know.
So, any other discussion? Have you done? All in favor, say aye.
We do not have a second.
No, no, second on that yet.
So, you... Larry, Dolphins, second. Now, I'll call a question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried, be answered.
Three, or is it six? Sorry, three ayes.
Six oh?
It shouldn't be all.
I'm sorry, spoken.
Did you ask for any recitations?
Yes, I'm making sure. Six oh? Okay, we have a motion, a second to adjourn. Then they go...
Lisa Hay and Lisa...
Can we reinstate that?
Sure.
Or should we undo it and redo it?
We got Lisa Hay as the motion, second by Laddie Dolphin.
I said okay. Motion to adjourn. Second, Larry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
We could audition for the Keystone Cops or...
Yeah, really.